All this meeting in the County Planning Commission to order for the workshop worship. Started at three o'clock. Item two on our agenda is a request to postpone action, amend, or approve the agenda as presented. Do you have any requests for amendments, for motion?
Move to approve agenda as presented.
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All those opposed? All right. Thanks very much. We'll move on to item number three, discussion items, and we have one item A to review the working group's recommendation for housing and future land uses on the map. And at this time, I'll go over to the planning director.
All right. So, thank you. We'll just pick up where we left off on the 19th of November. And, of course, this could be a lot of conversations. I think we're giving this two hours, and we're not going to solve all the world's problems today, but just we'll try to advance it a little bit, come back in January and do another workshop, and keep working at this. So, I'll go ahead and... I know I shared some of the slides. You might have saw... I did make some changes to the slides, and I'll point out where I had made some changes. All righty. Of course, this is... We're going to start this out with the strategic plan that was adopted last January, February, I believe, in '25, beginning of this year. Of course, in strategic plan, housing is a core priority with the goal of providing a wider range of residential options while preserving rural character. The county intends to align all future housing land use decisions with the comprehensive plan, ensuring residential growth occurs in the right places towards economic goals. So, I like this map just to show... This is in the 2021 comp plan, and I think this gives a good sort of visual of, you know, the current patterns as far as land use patterns. This is the existing land use map. And so, this is a zoning map. This is just showing how, you know, what's on the ground. You can see the dark yellow or single-family residential, I would say, smaller, the maybe less than five acres. Then your lighter yellow, you can see kind of in these pockets, that's going to be your larger 20- to 100-acre lots. And then your green, your rural parcels are your much larger lots. And then we have our state and county lands here. And then this is what we would call, these red line, of course, is the 2020 plan, called special study areas. I just refer to them as the growth areas because it's pretty much mimic the, you know, the utility service area. Of course, we have the one in the corner here, too. So, this sort of gives you an idea. You can see, you know, through much of the county, you know, the single-family residential is pretty well established, and even some of these areas is fairly dense already today. So, move forward here. For the strategic plan, the CWG, that's the Citizens Working Group, that we're working on their recommendations for the changes to the comp plan. We also had the housing study survey, which came last time. Central theme has emerged, and that's how can Palatine preserve rural landscapes while still creating room for needed housing and economic development? Kind of the big question that everyone wants to know. So, focus growth makes sense, and the idea, I think, is directly developed into the designated growth areas, and that's about nine and a half square miles, those red rings that we showed you in a previous map. And just for reference, Palatine's 272,000... 272 square miles. And that's mostly where utilities and road networks would support more growth. All the other things is more flexible zoning tools, which we'll talk about today. Within the growth areas, consider replacing rigid zoning with a unified master plan tool like a UDD. That's Unified Development District. That's a name I came up with. That promotes coordinated layouts, mixed-use options, and better long-term outcomes. Recognize current development patterns. You know, much of Palatine's residential growth is occurring on 10-acre or larger agricultural parcels, often on private roads, which spread out housing, increase long-term service costs, and provides little support to the commercial tax base. Just something to think about, this is one of the conversations that I've had with numerous people in the office, and maybe even some of you, is in Palatine agricultural lands, one potential policy lever is the use of private roads. Private roads, if they're limited to serving only three or four lots, and larger subdivisions, say over four lots, were required to build B. dot public road standards, it would likely reduce the number of large-lot rural subdivisions. Larger subdivisions, I'd say, over three or four lots, would still be allowed provided public road is constructed, but such requirement could help redirect, redirect more growth into the growth areas where utilities, road capacity, long-term services are better aligned. I think the issue with this is that the large-lot rural development of private maintained roads is significant ubiquitous development pattern in the county. So, it's something the county's used to, kind of part of the character. So, that would be the only sort of making that change, say, going to a three or four. If y'all want to interrupt me anytime, you know, that's kind of what this is.
Oh, okay. I want to run. This is something new, right? This is the first time?
Right. This is the first time that we've... Right. This is just... Nothing has been brought up in conversations, at least with a couple of people on the board. And just, again, it's just, it's right. At this point, we're just talking about it.
Right. So, how many private roads have been done in the last 10 years?
Well, I don't know. In the last 10 years, I'd say in the last... I can say in the last almost two years, we probably had at least seven, six, or seven.
Where are they at? Because I'm not familiar with the one on Clayville.
Oh, with Clayville. We've had one off of 711. We've had one off of Maidens recently, 10.
The one on Maidens, that was a private road?
Right. There's one off of Maidens that was a private road not long ago. Jessica might have some more.
Conservation subdivision up near Palatine, up Palatine, Virginia?
Oh, that's a conservation subdivision. It wasn't a private 10-acre lot, private road?
It was a private road.
Yeah. The conservation, that was a private road built to state standards.
Okay.
Which one did you down there?
522, a 10-lot, 10-lot private road subdivision.
I hit it on the map.
Custom private, trying to picture it.
I mean, I can get a... I mean, again, this is just a total initial conversation.
Harvey Griffin had one that was kind of, before we get to the bridge, that's been a long time.
Oh, yeah.
But that was ubiquitous. I looked it up, and hear people said, "It means everywhere. It means it's just, this is all over the county. It means no plan to it." That's what we have.
I mean, that's what the first map was just to show, is that there are that large lot. Now, some of them are on public, you know, state maintenance.
Right. Yeah. The 10-acre lot. Right. Yeah. Just not that many. I'm not familiar with many 10-acre lot private subdivisions for that to even be a concern.
And maybe I just, in my almost two years, maybe there's just been more lately, but maybe before that, there haven't. But I've just, you know, and again, and I think it better clear, is that, that would be a... I can't say how long that's been a, you know, a rule as far as the private road.
Yeah. I know that they tried to do, remember? Tried to do away with the private road subdivisions a few years back, and I wasn't on the planning commission then, but the planning commission board said, "No, keep on."
Right. I mean, from my perspective, I think the question is, in any county, especially rural county, the question will always be, and everyone's a little different, is what is that number that can be on a private road?
It's always been 10.
You know, where it was four, it was six. You know? Some places, I've seen four.
And that would also, like, the parcel size of a parcel of land, too, would have a lot because you're really penalizing really large pieces of land. Somebody had 200 acres, and they're forced to sell for one reason or another, you know, four 50-acre lots. Well, instead of doing that, they say, "Well, if we got to do a state road, if we go over that, we're going to go ahead and apply for the RR5 and do 5-acre average." And then you're really losing, you're losing all your...
We don't have that anymore.
We have, we have a 5-acre average, so it's been taken away. It's just a 5-acre, um, average. All right. We have a 5-acre. We don't have a 5-acre average. Right. But there is a 5-acre standard. That's what I'm saying.
That'd be better for the person than 10 acres.
It would be, it would be better for the person. And that's what's going to happen. Instead of having 10-acre agriculture where people can do, you know, grow whatever, their own food, or have cattle or horses, and then they're going to be forced to do the 5-acre minimum subdivisions, and that's going to eat up all the land.
But that would require a state road.
Well, it would require... Yeah. That's what I'm saying. That you're going to require a state road anyway.
And you have to be rezoned. You have to get it rezoned.
You have to be rezoned, but then you're going to hit the issue that if you go for rezoning and you're in the A-10, then you're not going to meet comp plan because you're in royal acres, or royal residential, which is the 10-acre minimum.
Right.
So, it's that, yes, it works, and in theory, it would help with the land.
Right.
But then you're not in comp plan compliance, and our comp plan says in rural areas, we have to maintain one dwelling unit per eight acres. So, a 5-acre lot doesn't meet that dwelling per acre average.
So, if we could just back it up just a second.
Sorry?
No, no, no. It's all good conversation, but a question asked, like, in earlier before we started was like, the process for this, you know? Can you go through that again?
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're trying to put together, we're, you know, taking what the work group gave us as far as recommendations, and we're, you know, this is something that I sort of added in as just a talking point. So, the idea is to try to come up with at least some sort of consensus. This is a good way to head it, let's think about it a little more. Don't have to come up with today necessarily, but as we... I think this is, this particular point is something that I think it's important to comp, to sort of reaffirm if we wanted to stay with the current code and current sort of standards on private roads, if this is a time to sort of evaluate it. And there might be some other things that come up down the road, you know, as we work through this next few months, but that was just one that, you know, as planning director, I said, "Hey, I think this is, this is a good one to sort of put out there," because it has been discussed, and I've heard from other folks, you know, "Hey, is this something that would maybe..." You know, if the goal is to preserve these rural areas to larger lots, is if this, you know, go into a three or four private road, limited to three or four lots, for instance.
Think people that own large parcels would probably have something to say about that because you're devaluing their property.
Yeah. I mean, you wouldn't have the same... Some of it, but you still have to get that private, you know, but I mean, I haven't seen one denied yet.
I mean, you can still do 10-acre lots if they build a state road, which, way the standards are now with the private roads, almost to state standards anyway, but whenever I see pavement, pavement over gravel, it's like, it makes it more urban-looking to me than gravel private roads, keep it kind of country-looking, in my opinion.
But my also thought is that if you, if you were to reduce it to three or four of them, and again, I just use three or four lots, that would be by right, you'd just have to build the road to, you know, that you wouldn't have to go to the border, you know?
And I think one of the other things, and I think I've been in the, some of the conversations with you on this as well, is I think part of the thought was is trying to work on the growth and where it happens, and I don't want to say like, control where it happens, but if we have areas of the county that we know growth will happen, then maybe that'll help preserve some of the farmland or the more true royal, so we're not just dividing up all these big things, big parcels of land. And so, if there was a way to guide development towards the growth area versus just random lots throughout the county.
People that buy on the high-growth, high-density are not looking for large land anyway. The two types of people are totally different in what they're looking for. So, you're not, I don't, I don't see why that's solving anything.
I think Jessica's right. You're right. That's the concept. Totally right. And then, Darling, your idea is that this is a, I call it a product, but this is a development pattern that people like.
Right.
I mean, that, you know, to people that is popular. So, that's sort of where the...
But not a lot of it's been going on, at least not what I'm seeing, but I mean, so I don't, I think we got so much other to work on to try to solve than bringing this up.
Jim, can we pause and have a discussion?
Yes.
And that's about this thing about rural character and the definition of it. Rural character has nothing to do with dividing up resources and how to make the best use of land. It's not on the land use map anywhere. It should be on, if this is the rural character and it's something that you can, it's got to be identified like the other things that we have on the land use map, it needs to be on the land use map, but the only thing I can see, you need to draw a circle around the whole Palatine County that that's what it is. Now, for me, this rural character thing is like suicide. Suicide is a permanent solution to a temporary problem. People are living right now, you know, this thing about Palatine being a rural, rural county, but going on down the road, we only have a fixed amount of land. And if we're going to just destroy the land because nobody can farm anything, you know the size farmers done in their days, it's not going to be of any use. It's just going to be, and I can't really say a house, you know, on a 10-acre lot is anything by rule. I call it, it's suburban development on steroids. That's what it is. It's, that's all it is. And it's just trashing land. And as far as about the definition of rural character, a rural character is not applicable to the subject matter we're discussing. It doesn't define any type of housing or residential development. Rural character is a literary figure that plays a person in movies, novels, plays that depict a self-reliant, hard-working individual, that in some roles is plotted against the elements of nature, drought, storms, floods, and some Western movies, Little House on the Prairie. Those are all rural characters. And this is just co-opted something that has no reality to it. There are rural areas, but if somebody would, you know, show me, I don't understand, view sheds as far as what you're looking at and so forth, but as of yet, nobody has defined rural character. Even USDA just says it's a non-urban area. And so, you're talking about a phantom thing, you know, which, that's...
I think you like to call it agricultural instead of rural.
It's, it's dividing the land and what you're supposed to do, and think about it, the state of Virginia has laid out the comprehensive plan and what's to be accomplished in it, and if we would go by this and what's laid out in, we wouldn't be talking about these problems we have here because it talks about the balance of all the ingredients that goes in into a community. Now, this is because the land that we're dealing in Palatine actually belongs to the state of Virginia, and the reason they wrote this up, that we're under a, you might say, a law, even though the only way you get punished for not following these laws and have to do land development is somebody takes you to court, sue you, and you got to pay. And so, if we follow what the state of Virginia has laid out, instead of, we're off on some tangent about, the focus of it is about some rural character or something, it has nothing to do with making the best use of a limited amount of land we have in Palatine. And President, right now, he put that map up there, but it's in that comprehensive plan. Right now, 55% of the land in Palatine is in parcels of 200 to 100 acres, including over 100 acres. So, I don't know why you think the county is disappearing into some high-density urban development area. And as far as, it also says, and I wrote that to y'all about, the state says it will have designated, it says you'll have designated urban, and so if we had designated, that has the warrant, so we could more easily move on through the plan, and it would only take a little bit of update, you know, every five years instead of going back through this whole thing all the time. So, that's, that's my vision, and that's what I'd like to do, and to make it easier. And particularly, the housing situation is blotting out a, a large part of the population that is a big part of your economy. If you're going to block out young couples with children, and they can't move into county, you've blocked out one of the bigger elements of economic activity in your county, and that's what we're doing. So, we're just blocking out economic activity. We're talking about doing stuff to get the real estate tax rate down, but when you block those people out, you're not going to have the economic activity that you're looking for. And so, that's the outcome of focusing on this thing about rural character and maintaining these 10-acre lots. And ubiquitous also means it's kind of not, not a prevalent idea across other counties in the state of Virginia.
The people that approach, I mean, the people that approach me, like at the Sheetz Gas Station or wherever, the people that are, that are welders and plumbers and all those kind of things, if they happen to recognize me, they talk about 10 acres or more, you know, not ambiguous or whatever, you know, they're not defined it as, they want a rule, but they don't explain it that way. They just want Palatine to stay the way it is.
No, like, I don't want to grow older, but, you know, I have a growth area, and that's the same idea.
Yeah.
I think the survey sort of, I think, the survey that was done, one of the things I took from it is I saw that people, I think the majority would like to see poor housing options, but they also very clearly like the rural area, the large lots as well. So, it's a little bit conflicting, you know?
So, one other question on that, is there some kind of legality obligation that private landowners have to the other people living in Palatine? I mean, is there some common ownership in my land or other? That's what this rural character idea is. It's about there's some kind of common ownership in everybody else's land in Palatine that this has got to be sustained, and this is what you got to do or can't do on your land because it's got to be some resource of rural character. And nothing like that exists, you know, except for people have existed in their minds. But I would say one thing, it is being used as a resource for reelection in Palatine, land in Palatine, because all you got to do is say, "I'm for rural character in Palatine, you can reelect." So, the land in Palatine is being consumed as a resource because that's what we can't get past.
And just from my experience, because I do sell real estate and the Gus Farm down the road, most of the people buying those, these are large lots, 20 acres or more, these are couples in their 30s that have two or three children, and they wanted big land.
But they have big salaries.
Somehow, they had big salaries, right. But there are all those people, but they're from, most of these people are, are from Palatine that I run across wanting, you know, 10 acres or more. They don't want to be, they don't want to be in a little neighborhood.
And I think that's also the mix, and like, I partially feel like Palatine's kind of gotten away, and not all of you guys, I think, have been here for a while. Like, to me, Palatine's always been generational. I feel like there's so many people that you go different places, and it's like multiple generations of the family are here. I'll be honest, our daughter's the fourth generation from my husband's family. I know you've got multiple generations here, and I'm sure, you know, you do as well.
Yep.
But for me, I feel like there's two generations that we've kind of neglected over the past couple of years, and I don't have a date, but it's the ones coming out of high school that either go to trade school or go straight to work, or go to college and then come back as graduates. And then it's the older community that's been in their houses, that wants to retire, downsize, not live in the big house that they grew their family in. I feel like the middle age, you know, growing families, families with kids going off to college, like, we have all of that housing, but we don't have the housing for the bookends of the spectrum, and I feel like we've lost it. Like, I feel like we had it with Holly Hills and the smaller lots.
We've lost the lower income opportunity.
It's either lower income, it's either starter homes, like, you know, people not married yet, or couples that just got married, they don't have kids, or it's the ones that want to downsize and not have the big 3,000-square-foot house on five acres of land that they have to maintain. They want the little yard that maybe they don't even have Scottsgrass. I mean, we have Scottsville, but it's always like, I mean, I'm sure you know with real estate, I feel like there's never a house for sale, and if it is, it's like...
Yeah.
But, so I feel like for our older generation, we would need more of Scottsvilles or, you know, that.
Well, there's no, there's no housing above that. People that Scottsville can move into, like you're saying, like a smaller place, you know, it just doesn't exist. And also, there's no, I understand years ago, they were going to build a, I wouldn't call it a nursing home.
Assisted living.
Yeah. Assisted living.
It was supposed to have done that.
Yeah. So, we don't have any of that.
Yep. We need that. That's the next level, too.
Yeah. So, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of things that need to be addressed, so this, this is probably going to be a long conversation, which I don't have a problem with, but there's...
Yeah. Well, what a lot of people, new people, especially in the county, don't, do not realize is back in the 60s and 70s, Palatine was the fastest-growing county in the region, not the state, but in this regional area, it was growing so fast. The Board of Supervisors then decided, "Okay, how can we slow growth down because we're growing too fast? We get too many people in the county. Schools are having to be built, we're spending too much money." So, then all of a sudden, then the 10-acre lots started popping in, and depending on the Board of Supervisors, they started putting emphasis on, "Okay, we're going to do larger lots." Well, back in the 60s and 70s, there were no really large lots. There was farms.
Yeah. Everybody farm. There's nobody who can sell their lots.
But you had Holly Hills, you had Chestnut Oaks, you had...
Lake Shawnee.
Lake Shawnee, Red Lane, you had all, and if you look at the map that you showed, you see pockets all in the county of the smaller lots, subdivisions. Now, people really think because we are 10-acre lots, that's our rural character, is our 10-acre lots. That's making us rural. And Mr. Hapson, that's not making us rural. What was rural was the farms we had, we know all the ads.
Right. Yeah.
And a lot of those farmers, though, did okay. Mr. Porter, Tillman, I mean, personally, sold their farms and some divisions in there, and a lot of them looked very nice. Nothing against them. I mean, that was their prerogative and well-deserved for the labor that they put on their farms. The problem with going to the 10-acre lots now is it's raised the price of the land. We have no starter homes, no lots, we're starter homes.
Right.
And people, you get that conflict, as you were talking about, people complain, "Well, we need more starter homes. We need people, for younger people to come into," or the same thing, "for older people to retire to." But now, we've alienated them because we don't basically allow those lots, you know, it's a lot easier for somebody to take 10, have 100 acres and put 10, a private road in, put 10 lots in, and still, hey, just put, you know, put two-acre lots in there and do a conservation easement subdivision, something like that. So, we want to have people mad at us one way or the other. One is that, you know, if we do say, "Okay, we can do smaller lots, this, you know, to try to get the prices down, make it more affordable," then you have the people that recently bought 10 acres, they're the ones that are going to complain about, "Well, you're losing the rural look." They were never here with the rural look was truly here, they just here recently.
More people are talking about doing the ADUs, too, on these larger parcels. That helps a lot, too. But that's why, instead of taking away something, an opportunity, offer a diversity of everything. Offer 10-acre lots, offer two-acre lots, offer one-acre lots, offer, I don't want it, the little cottage, little things.
Right.
Offer a little bit of everything. Don't take away to try to fix something that's really not a problem. I just don't see a lot of that happening.
I can say, in Palatine, you know, since 1948, and I've never thought about rural character. I mean, literally, never in my mind, about rural character. Even I've seen development, you know, come on with development, it doesn't bother me in any kind of way, I understand the natural course of life. And for some kind of reason, this idea about this rural character thing has some validity to it, and has no validity to it whatsoever. There's no obligation on any landowner's part in any kind of way to maintain any kind of vision, you know, that somebody wants to see, you know? You can go out in Buckingham and buy some large land if you want that. There's no obligation in Palatine. We're supposed to be making decisions about the best use of limited land we have in Palatine. And that stuff has not, doesn't figure into putting it on the land use map. It's not a resource that you can sell to anybody. You can't trade it, you can't make a, put a value on it, but all these other things on this land use map and those types of parcels, you know what the value of them are. They are a resource, they help people and so forth, but you can talk about this rural character, but it has no commoditized value to it. You can't sell it, can't.
He said...
To me, somebody's got to say, "Stop it."
Well, and I think, so like, go back to your point, too. Like, I mean, I do feel like we need more options. I feel like what he and Paul are both saying is like, we have no options right now, and I think we know that. I feel like what he and Paul are both saying is like, we have no options right now and I think we know that. But the question I think that Liggins kind of probably battling with is, okay, we have ten acre lot, you know, royal areas and comp plan equals the ten acre lots or whatever that we set. And then where do you allow rezonings to happen that would go smaller? Like five acres or two acres or one acre. One acre is probably going to have to be on water and sewer. Or smaller than that cottages are going to have to be water. So I think that's where the growth areas are coming into play of, do you only allow smaller lots within the growth areas? So do we expand our growth areas some so that we kind of have like, with water and sewer, you can have, you know, an acre or less over, you know, county. Water and sewer is not available, now you're on well and septic. So within this growth area, we allow two to five acres, but as long as it's within the growth area.
Check on it.
Or, or do you have it, I'm not going to say countywide, like anywhere, like, you know what I'm trying to say? So that's, I think, some of this discussion.
So we lived in Deadwood recently. Uh, there was, there, you know, they didn't have a rural statement or anything. Their, their code and policies are very simple. But it was like two acres, the lot had to be two acres or more because of septic and sewer. There was no, that was it.
Yeah, well.
So no matter, yeah, they had to have well and septic, it had to be two acres or more. Period.
And that's going to be most of our county. Because we are very limited, where water and sewer by county provided is.
And the ten acre minimum has been around since, what, twenty thirteen?
No.
No.
No, it's been around since two thousand four.
Four, yeah. Four thousand.
Okay, that's been quite a long time.
But it used to be a large lot, a ten acre was called a large lot.
Well, yeah, to me.
It wasn't like countywide, that's the minimum.
No. Right, I mean, to me, that, that number, uh, whenever, you know, I've mostly worked in rural counties, so it's what's the minimum lot size now? Because ag, ag time default does default to residential. Often, you know, uh, it is, I've seen it as low as acre, acre and a half, as high as twenty five. And, you know, Rapid Hana County, for instance. So when I was here, that's the first one, what's the minimum lot size in Palatan? Ten acres? Oh, okay, that's pretty large. You know, uh, so, you know, as far as this, uh, you know, and then you're, how many do you, you know, how many lots do you allow on a private road? That's sort of the follow up question would, would be, you know, Orange, I think it's ten. Here it's ten, got to have, obviously. So we don't have to have the answer to this one today by any means. We don't, we, like normally say, we just keep it like it is, maybe there are, but, but I just, like I said, that was just to sort of start the conversation. Is that something that the commission wants to think about or just say, look, you know, we'll move in another direction, but we don't need to, you know, we don't need to necessarily touch that, you know.
So only question something, but I, if there's two other people, I'd say I'm for the three or four lot maximum on private road.
You're for it?
Yep, that's as far as you can go on private roads, I'm one of the four lots. And we're going to get on to the thing about cluster development and, uh.
Right.
So the only thing, I mean, I guess.
Conservation subdivisions. So I'm going to be fault in the ATN area only cluster development and conservation subdivisions only. That's the only kind of residential development.
Yeah, I mean, the only, Paul might be able to maybe help speak to this. The only thing I would say is if you go down to the three or four, Goochlin, I think is four max on their private road. What it's, and if Callie was here, she could probably correct me better. I think what's happened at Goochlin now is they're so limited on their private roads that basically everything comes through on a rezoning case. Because if you go over that four, then you're doing the state maintained roads, turn lanes, whatever they are. So at that point, if you've got to do all of that for five lots, you may as well rezone for thirty lots. And so that's where you're seeing so many subdivisions right now in Goochlin because everything's got to come through on a rezoning case.
Let's see, the reason for that there is one time Goochlin, uh, on, I think I'm ninety five percent correct. Years ago, Goochlin had a twenty acre minimum lot size.
Right.
Their per land prices went sky high for their lots. So then they reversed it and said, hey, we'll go back to smaller lots and they reduced it down to four or five.
Four on the private roads.
Four on the private roads.
Four on the private roads.
Yeah.
But the acre size was five in, in their agricultural area.
Right.
It's five acres.
Right. So I just, I didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, not years ago.
I just wanted to like mention that as like, if we go this way, we can look at Goochlin and see what's been happening.
Right, right.
As well, to see if.
But again, if you're looking for bodies to put in for commercial businesses, you've got to attract people here. And if you're going to just have growth stagnant, which we sort of are, we have, yeah. You're not going to have any.
It went stagnant when they did away with the, the R five.
Yes.
Three seventy, that's when it went stagnant.
Yeah. Yeah. That's. Because your R five that you know and it's what.
Was a two acre, was a five acre average, two acre minimum.
Yes.
So if you had one at two acres, you had to have eight acres to balance.
Yeah, or whatever. And I think that's how Oakleaf has those two twenty acres out front, which is, don't murder me, rural view shed over here. Because it, it kept the, the hay, you know, at the entrance of that subdivision, it still.
Very good looking subdivision, as is Appomattox Trace because they left a lot of that land farmland out front and did the houses on two acres in the back.
But that's where R five went away and our R five came into place. And that doesn't have the average, it's just strict five acres.
Exactly, which is not as, I don't think is appealing.
Well, and it doesn't give that much flexibility to development.
Right. And nobody's talked about bringing back the R five.
And I don't even think we have R two anymore. R two's grandfather.
Single family, right. We do have it. Middle of two acre. Well, I'll just, we'll just keep on going here.
That's fine, the conversation's good.
All right, you know, once again, it's just another, we could come back to this, but just something to think about. At least one commissioner has expressed their support, uh, but again, something to hold to this conversation. Our core principle of housing, the CWG emphasized expanding, and so did the Housing Study Group, expanding Palatan's housing inventory beyond large lots, single family homes, so include smaller homes, cottage courts, accessory dwellings, mixed use residential appropriate areas, ensuring options for retirees, workforce, workforce households, young families, long term residents. Uh, the focus was clear that higher density mixed use should only occur within growth areas as we just talked. So that are near infrastructure or things that could support it.
I don't mean to spring this on you now, but can you show a map of the, or go back one slide please? Can you show a map of the growth areas? Do you have that like in the back of this briefing?
Well, I mean.
Specific.
Here, here are the ones from twenty twenty one. And there was a little bit, the CWG did make some changes like for a year.
Yes.
You know, and we'll, I'll show you those.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
The only growth area we had was for us, any kind of high density housing was down at two eight eight seven eleven and up in a village. It said it could be in a comprehensive plan, it said it could be a long route sixty where water and sewer was, but he didn't put it on the map. But in the narrative, it says it can be longer.
Right.
But that's where everything is gateway business and gateway business doesn't allow residential.
Yeah. And, and don't forget that, you know, over the last fifteen years, this, these growth, man, those red areas are, you know, sort of, yoyo, larger, smaller, actually, mostly they've gotten smaller.
Yes.
But there, you know, there were times, and again, that's, those are subject to the, you know, the board or whoever's kind of at the control of the levers at that time. Uh, and that's why it's been changed a lot over the last few years.
And that's where I didn't know if expanding those growth areas, which the CWG might have done some, might allow the more options that you want, but not countywide.
Right.
Just in certain areas. You have the well septic and water sewer distinction that you can make for different paths based on what it's offered.
So the work group, you know, corp housing principle, you know, total well designed neighborhoods. We've talked, and we'll get into showing some examples of cluster housing, potential mixed use development, uh, compatibility with surrounding land uses, strong buffering, landscaping, walkability, open space and quality architecture standards. Uh, one of the key recommendations was this United Development District. And UDD is envisioned to be a single flexible master plan zoning district that replaces the current village area districts, the VR, VC, VRPD, VCPD, I think I missed a couple. It would be applied only within designated growth areas. So it'd be a standalone zoning district that could be applied in designated growth areas would support a coordinated range of development. You could do a, a master plan for a light industrial, you could do mixed use, you could do just simply residential. I could do village. Uh, so it would really allow, you know, whatever the master plan, maybe the underlying future land use said, you could master plan that. It wouldn't have a lot of rigid requirements. So you might, you might have a density requirement. We haven't written the ordinance, but you might say you can't have more than X number per acre or something like that. But the idea is to give a, um, you know, more of a clean slate, let, let someone bring to you, hey, this is how I want you to develop the land. Yes, no, change it.
Can I ask a question about UDD? You're, it's not where you have to do a portion of it commercial before you do the residential. This is just, you can do strictly residential with no commercial or anything.
Right, I mean, the idea could be applied anywhere in those areas, is what I was saying, growth areas. And that, uh, if you were going to do like a Oak Ridge master plan for an industrial park, I mean, you could come in and, and show how that would lay out. You know, you could, you could do mixed use. It could be any sort of, uh, you know, master planning is not just limited to mixed use. I mean, you could master plan just a housing development. So the idea is that this would be just a flexible tool, uh, that you, you can bring it forward and you'd be approved what you present. But again, uh, we'd probably set some minimum, you know, we want to see some buffering here. But I would probably shy away from putting a lot of requirements in it because that kind of defeats the purpose of allowing, say a land planner or developer to sort of, sort of be creative and bring something forward that could, you know, you might say, look, it's a little too dense, you know, just have to kind of evaluate when you, when you get something for you, but, it's sort of the way things were done a long time ago. It's just what a master planned it.
Yeah, I would be afraid of that, sound like a comprehensive plan. Only thing about it is finding parcel of land large enough to do it.
Put it on, yeah. Right, and that, that's, that is a good point. We'll, we'll get to that. Again, the African submitted master plan, showed how the site parcels would be developed, prove the developer wouldn't be tied to that plan unless admitting it be a new public hearing. So if you want to change something around, there might be some specification where you could change a few things, but there isn't a substantial change. So I think the, you know, the key question is, again, we're not, we're not trying to write the ordinance now, but at least with the CWG and even the Housing Study Group, it's sort of with, with the point commission that endorse something like this, realizes that, hey, we got to write the ordinance, you know, probably take us months to, to look at it and see what it could look like. But again, it's a, an old sort of zoning tool that's maybe becoming more popular now. And again, my, because you have all these irregular lot shapes, it's hard to sometimes, um, you know, assemble parcels. I think a master plan allows the ability to maybe potentially lead, you know, lead connections to future properties, offer, play with lot sizes and, and uses and sort of let, let, let's land plan and be developed, you know, be creative in their, their planning. But again, simply having this zoning district, you know, doesn't mean that you automatically being approved. Every, every case is going to be just out of some merits, but at least if this was a tool that in a growth areas could be applied, I think, I think it would be a, a good tool. Jessica.
Um, yes, um, it's, it's one of those, you know, we, I think it would, to me, and maybe I'm wrong here, so correct me if I'm kind of, to me, the UDB would almost replace like, or be similar to the cut process that we see in other areas. Like the UDD would kind of be specific to the growth areas, it would allow that master plan development. But everything would be allowed on a case by case basis. We can't say as a blanket, everything in the growth area gets this or everything gets that. So it kind of allows these little.
Yeah, I mean.
Pockets to develop, kind of like we do when we go through the cut process. If we look at that parcel of land, we look at what they're trying to do with it. We look at all the surrounding stuff, see if it fits or works or whatever.
Yeah, I think the future land use map suggested area of game with business. Someone came in to master plan a housing development and said, well, that's a conflict. Came into master plan a commercial area. Then we just, it's simply just sort of, uh, you know, uh, you know, getting away from maybe the rigid lot sizes and, uh, some of the things that we, you know, when we think of CC, uh, would just, again, I repeat myself, but it would just allow for their maximum abilities just to, I think, do better, overall better land plan. And you get a better end product.
Right.
And again, we're thinking, you know, we, you know, we're not thinking of a year or two, we're thinking that this was something that was twenty years from now. If things were master planned more carefully and thought about the surrounding land uses around them and how they might connect, I think long term, it would, it would be a better product, better, better land.
I mean, I think it would give more, at least in developments, I'm going to be very price stereotypical when I say this, I'll pause. It'll give more of like planned community type feel, like if you have this where it's a planned development and you set standards for what all the buildings look like, you have architectural review boards that review plans, you know, like you have this level of control. And it's almost like when you have these commercial shopping centers, you know, it's not like piecemeal, like this building and that building and they all like, you know, they all kind of look similar. I call it the Hilton Head effect. I guess I went to college in Savannah, some people might know, but.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you probably wouldn't have to be that strict, they're super strict. But it's, it, it kind of lends more towards that. You look at everything in a development kind of as a whole versus just the little pieces.
I think that's a good way to sort of represent.
But all this came up because of, of trying to.
Excuse me.
Provide affordable housing because that's what everybody wants. So how do you keep these neighborhoods in the so-called affordable housing? That's why I was starting. I mean, that's what the board kept talking, we need more affordable homes for, so how do you do that in these?
Well, I think one, because you're, because you're in a sort of, you know, situation where you're asking developer or land planner to bring, uh, you know, their idea to you, that you, you're giving flexibility in the zoning to try different lot sizes.
So we already kind of have that with the PDs. The VRPD and the VCPD are planned developments. And in those, so we have village residential VR, village center VC. Then the PDs tech behind that allows you to kind of write your own rules in terms of setbacks or, you know, different things. Like you still have to maintain a broad scope, but once you get into the planning of things, you kind of have some flexibility. So I think what you're trying to do is kind of take all these little zonings and put them under one. So we don't have VR, VC, VRPD, VC, it's just kind of like one.
We already have that, we already have something in our ordinance. I just think that there's five or six of them.
Yeah.
Each one's a little bit different, they're a little bit confusing to me and, you know, and so if you just consolidate them into one, easier to understand the ordinance.
Simplify.
Yeah, simplify, yeah. So far, all of the high density that's been done in Palatan has not been so-called affordable. Not even conservation subdivision.
Right. I'm not just sure it can be done, the prices that I think.
Exactly.
Folks are imagining this is going to be.
Exactly.
It's going to be.
It's just going to cause more growth and more high end homes and.
Well, guess what, yes. Come on.
I want to hear your ideas. Let's do some ideas.
Sure, my age when I was in college in the seventies, when instead of UDD, we were, it's called PUD, Plan Unit Development. We did Brandon Mills courses, one of the largest, was done by, at the time. It ended up being more residential than it is commercial, but it does, it's got to go off. course, it's got the houses, it does have commercial too. But it does, it allows you not to be pigeonholed into one code or zoning or however you want to call it, that it's only VR, that, you know, no, it opens it up so that you can say on, on 60, let's say, where you do have water and sewer, and someone could come in there and say, hey, you know, maybe they do want to do just residential so they could present that. It's been turned down in the past, but maybe it'll fly out now. But there again, maybe they'll come in and say, hey, I want to do some commercial in the front, I'll put some small residential in the back. And maybe in the very, very back, if it's a large enough piece, I have some bigger resident, you know, step it out, you know, kind of step it or stage it so it blends in so you don't have so many people complaining about, hey, you're backing up to my five-acre lot, I don't have two-acre lot with a half-acre lot. And so.
Yeah, it sort of allows you to adapt it to the land itself.
Land itself.
And that's, I think that's what I'm trying to say. Yeah, that's a good way to say it.
Because like VR right now is only residential, VC is village center, which allows commercial residential mix, but it's not exactly a mixed use. It's kind of more like, if you were, to me, in the village center, if you think of like retail on the bottom and then residential on the top, like that's kind of the mixed use, but that doesn't really apply when you get out to like a 60 mixed use would be like retail, commercial in the front, residential in the back, like what you just said. The only thing I would say to that is if you are going in the growth areas, gateway business as a comp plan base is going to present a lot of problems. Now, it might be something to where if you are gateway business, then you have to have mixed use with resi, I'm like, I'm going to say mixed use, like you can't do all residential, you have to have a X component of commercial. But I don't know if you could make all gateway business lots say that they all have to be commercial developments. You know what I'm trying to say?
Well, I think that's.
Because gateway business used to be RC zoning, which was allowed residential, commercial, all the way down 60, and then that's gone away. So.
Well, I think when we look at the maps, the idea is that maybe we look at more areas that could be, I would just say, mixed use.
Right.
You know, that could potentially.
Now, maybe they go over to that economic opportunity or, yeah, priorities industrial opportunities, you know, and look at that, but that's what.
So all the, all the, just the concept realizing at this moment, I write the ordinance for, that's, that's not months' way of, if not sometime well to 25, just the, this is a general broad concept of a master plan district, something that this, would you all nod your head just to, I mean, again, we're not approving a project, we're just saying this could be a tool that could be in the zoning ordinance. I'm saying to replace the ones, the VCP, all those, something a little more future friendly.
I pointed that to Ling before we started, that South Creek is a unified development district and it just lacks one element, and that's residential. It's got industrials, it's got commercials, it's got retail.
Mm-hmm.
It just lacks residential.
Residential.
And so, I mean, that's kind of a setting of what, which is thinking about is accomplished.
I would almost think that Oak Bridge would kind of mimic it. It would be an industrial-only UDD, but it's a planned industrial park in Oak Bridge.
Yeah. And that's the key, like you could use several, it could be several, it doesn't have to be pigeonholed to be mixed use, it could be industrial, commercial, or all combined, or just one thing, so. Take a real quick recess. Water break. Yes.
But they don't, we could have one eighteen or one ten or whatever the heck it was. I would mark it right where you marked it. Okay. And of course, I didn't, couldn't find my, I had a drill in the square block, I drilled three. Not ten, but I had a drill in the square block, so I marked the wall for you. It's like, that's great. Okay. No, but, okay, here's a list. Let's start on the list. And Dustin blessed it, so let's go. Okay. We're fine. Give me the check. So she's been November. Okay.
Second session. Here we go. Okay, so I think I saw everybody nod their head, just as a concept, the UDD is something that the planning commission would endorse. Am I saying that right or? I have to think about it.
Texted me instead of audio, it's not very good.
Oh, really?
So, but they couldn't understand what we were saying.
Oh.
Anyway.
Well, we'll try our best here. I'll try to talk real loud.
Clear, say.
So I'll just, we'll just go into, on the ADU, we can do this really quick. I actually made a mistake that's in the packet, ADUs, of course, you know, we have a pretty permissive ordinance in Powhatan. In A-10, they're allowed, permitted by right, up to 50% of the main unit's floor area. And I do believe that we've got quite a few in the county. And in R2, I had said they were not allowing R2, RU, and RR5, but they are, it just, it's up to, the detached can only be 35% of the main dwelling's floor area. Okay. And I think that's probably.
Even in RR5?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I think that is where I probably have seen a few more people at some conflicts at that 35%.
Doesn't it have to come for approval too? For the board?
I don't think so, but I will check it.
We've had, I've seen some come through for approval. I don't know what their zoning district was, but.
I don't think there's anything, but you might be.
It was somebody in a subdivision, they had to get an approval for ADU.
But, I mean, you can just see, I mean, it's, ADU is probably the first thing that comes to every planner's or every person's head when it comes to some kind of affordability. The CWG, they had recommended that if you wanted to go above 50%, that it could, in A-10 at least, that you could do it by CUP. And this did not mean that, you know, if you had a 2,000 square foot house, you'd get a CUP and get a 3,000 square foot ADU. That was not the intent. The intent is if, if you have, if you require to only have a thousand-foot ADU because you have 2,000 square foot house, then maybe you could get a CUP to have a 1,200 square foot ADU. That was sort of their thought, the way I presented it. And in A-10, I think, just as I have thought about this, this is my recommendation, I think it, again, I can't say we've had a lot of this, but it's probably, probably had more in the R2, in the RU is, is if you would maybe, if that would be increased to 50% of the main dwelling floor detached. And maybe in A-10, you go to 60% of the main dwelling. Ordinances are kind of all over the place with this. Some, some just say you have to be inferior to the main house, smaller, does, you know, a, a number just have to be smaller, some say half, some, some just even go in the square footage, those like thousands square feet, you know, so. As far as changing this, again, my recommendation would be maybe up it a little bit, maybe Or just make it simpler, that I have to go to a, to the CUP process, make a 60% in A-10, then in R2, RU, or 5, go to 50%. And I think we probably would have, at least in those latter ones, R2, RU, I think we'd probably see a few more ADU applications.
I'm sorry. Well, you go ahead.
So my understanding with the ADU, I don't think that an ADU can be used for affordable housing. It can be used for multi-generational, it can be used for aging in place, but by title and land, that ADU doesn't get a separate tax map parcel, it's treated as one. And so that main house and that ADU, like if, let's just say I'm her daughter and I built an ADU to age in place and I want to move or my job transfers me, her house also has to sell when my house sells. So to me, it doesn't go towards affordable housing because it's not like we can do a smaller house.
Right.
I'm going to say 900 square feet and then sell that for somebody to live there.
You can't do that, yeah.
So, but I don't think that you can rent it. I think part of the.
You can.
You can rent it.
You can't rent it?
You can rent it.
There's no provision for renting, am I right?
As long as the owner is in the main house or vice versa.
Right. The owner has to live on the side. So you can't rent both of them. Yeah, you couldn't rent both, you have to live on the side. So it kind of limits it to, you know, most of the time it's going to be, it's going to be family, you know, relative. How many ADUs in the county, how many are built just for like, hey, I want to put an ADU in because I want a piece of rental property? I would say almost none.
But it does kind of allow affordable housing too, if you have your kids, that they can store it there. But I always understood, am I wrong to think that, so if your main house that you, say you have 10 acres and you build a 2,000 square foot house, I've always thought that either you would go 50% of that or you could go a 4,000.
Yeah, smaller or larger.
And the 4,000 square foot house would become the primary. That's the way I always understood it.
Yeah, that's the way we've interpreted it too, but.
Okay, I just want to make sure I wasn't.
Right.
The existing house would turn into the ADU in that way.
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that was still out there.
It's kind of a rare case and.
It's becoming rare.
Right. You know, if the idea is to kind of speak to having more rental options or things like that, then that obviously is probably not one. But I have heard that has happened before.
Well, I think that probably goes to where if somebody lives in the house and then like they want, let's say they have that 2,000 or 1,500, let's just use that number, 1,500 square foot house, but then their parents are moving in and they want them to live there, then the parents take over the 1,500 square foot house, so the mom and dad with the four, two kids build the 3,000 square foot house.
Right.
It kind of goes that way versus, yeah.
And it has happened, but, so, you know, the, I presented to the CWG is anything over 50%, again, with the idea you're not going to make it larger than the, you're not going to go double the main house, you're just trying to get a, maybe, you know, that thousand square feet, you have a better plan for 1,100 square foot, foot ADU. We're making some, you know, maybe at least having a process where you could.
I think going to 60% on agricultural would be fine with me.
Yeah. And I think that's probably, instead of making these a public hearing, that's where I sort of came with the idea, just go into 60 and then the other districts go into 50 would probably be a more practical solution than trying to run everybody up to the board and planning commission and, you know, between 1,100 and 1,200, you know, a thousand square foot ADU to 1,200 square foot ADU. I mean, if you had 2,000 square foot principal house, so that's where sort of my recommendation is just sort of nudge those up a little bit. And again, it's, it's not something that has happened a lot, but I think that, so the few times I've seen it in my short tenure, two years, it's been in the RU and those places where the 35% was, was a little too small.
I think it's inconsequential, talking about over 15 minutes is probably enough.
Right. So we seem like that, that's a head shake then?
It's a head shake.
All right, good, good. So, okay, thank you. That's fine. That was my thoughts too, but I didn't say it. This is something I'm, yeah, right. Now, this is the, I think this is the concept that, you know, that I think really does address a lot of the affordability sort of issues and problems that might exist. This is the cluster housing concept. And of course, cluster housing, sometimes called college neighborhoods, pocket neighborhoods, small lot clusters, is a housing pattern where smaller homes are grouped together on a site while preserving shared open space instead of dividing it into larger, you know, traditional large lots. Instead of each home having its own yard, the development concentrates building footprints in one portion of property and sets the remainder aside for green space, open common space. Again, calling this the cluster housing. Some places right here called cottage, cottage court. So the CWG recommended the cluster housing cottage courts option within growth areas. Don't think it's necessarily a bad idea in rural areas, me personally, but these developments can be used by conditional use permit. It will enable smaller, modest homes arranged around shared open space, design for retirees, workforce households, residents, lower maintenance, and community assisted living. So, and again, here's just some, my personal feeling, whether or not this is something that this planning commissioner or board or county wants to embrace, I personally believe this will, it is becoming more popular, this, these cottage-type housing. It does really speak to me, to the populations that probably are the most stressed, the younger and the older. I see most clusters, my sort of thought is that a cluster house would probably be a minimum of 600 square feet, maybe a maximum of 12, 13 hundred square feet. There's, you can see Waynesboro just adopted a cottage course, but here's some headlines And the idea is that, and I'll just kind of stop for a second, with the cluster housing, you know, to me, there could be rentals. You could say if you had three acres, you did a cluster of six, or two acres, even smaller, you did a cluster of six houses. It would be possible for that to be just a rental property, one unified ownership. There's a possibility that it could be a condominium property. You own your house and the land underneath is in everyone's ownership. You could also make it feasible, and just divide it into small lots that you own your lot, that the, maybe the, you know, sort of like a conservation subdivision, the land around the open space or whatever is, is in community ownership. You know, again, I believe this concept is going to, is going to catch on, you know, and again, it doesn't necessarily have to subdivide for it. The, I know we've all seen these tiny homes and that's not really what we're talking about, but I think it's close. You know, the, the manufactured homes of yesteryear, the trailers, you know, they did serve a purpose and maybe they weren't as attractive as, they're basically long tubes, but this new sort of generation of manufactured homes are, are just totally different, especially on permanent foundations.
So for me, this reminds me of the cottages at Fine Creek. Now, I know, totally different use, they built those cottages as like, you know, to do the wedding venue and all the different things for people to basically stay at as a more hospitality piece, but if you took the mill at Fine Creek's cottages and put them into permanent residences for their use, to me, that's what this cottage, now, to go back to what you were saying, this is where a UDD would probably bury. to me, that's what this cottage, now, to go back to what you were saying, this is where a UDD would probably very, be very beneficial, to have that planned development, to have them all look unified, so you don't have super modern next to, you know what I'm trying to say? Like, they look like little neighborhoods, there is one in Farmville.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
If you wanted to see one kind of close.
I'll show it to you.
It was in the Habitat presentation.
Yeah, it, um, the one in Farmville, I asked them how they, is, uh, I asked them how they got it approved, they really don't know how. It happened like ten, twelve years ago, um, but, um, I'll show it to you. My only, um, I want to call it criticism, but my only sort of thought on this, the one in Farmville, is that it, it really, I mean, there's no rules, it's, you know, I think it could be a little better architecture, far as units go, I think that could look a little, uh, you know, okay, nicer, but it's a nice development, but I'll show it to you here.
They're a little bit closer, it's kind of, it's not as much open space, I think.
It's a little closer, probably than I would, I would envision for a county, but, um, let me share my screen here. Things like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, these are nine units, you see the parking here, again, it's, it is in town, but, you know, it's obviously on utilities. An idea, um, I mean, they're nice, I mean, I, I think, you know, again, they, to me, it serves those, it's gonna be, you know, I'm not saying it couldn't be families or middle-aged people, but I think it's gonna be a lot of younger folks, and, um, you know, probably some retirees, people on fixed incomes, uh, but, I mean, really, um, again, my, my only, my only, my only sort of comment would be, I think, architecture be, maybe have a few more features, but other than that, I, I think that's a good, good visual example, probably a little more dense, smaller lot than you'd envision maybe in a place like Powhatan, but, um.
The architecture, the more architecture you have, the higher the price goes.
Right, and that's, that's a, that's a careful, but it would be, it would be, there'd be by, it would, it would either be the CUP or resounding to establish.
That way we could control the way it goes.
Right.
They were kind of plain, but.
Right.
Right.
We don't, we don't need like stone fronts and stuff like, anything that drives prices up, we try to stay away.
I mean, I wasn't necessarily saying it was good, but as, it's more local than.
Right.
They're like, I mean, it's Farmville, so it's not that far away, and it's more in the city too, so it's, like Wiggins said, it's probably tighter than what you would put here, but, um.
But again, I, I just, you know, I, I'll just say, I, I just think we're gonna see more of this, of that type of development, um.
So what was the difference with the, so I can understand why the CWG would put it in the growth areas, because this is probably gonna need water and sewer.
Well, I mean.
I mean, you could do shared septic, some different things, depending on number of bedrooms.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I guess, what would the difference between the UDD and a CUP be?
Well, you could make it, uh, my thought is, you could make it a, a conditional use in A-ten, or whatever zoning districts that you want to make it, a conditional use permit, and then you would just have to apply for the CUP, uh, and show your layout, you know, to architecture, all those type of things would be, would be, would be expected to sort of be addressed as a condition. Uh, the other option is, you know, you, you could, uh, take a piece of land, use a UDD, and say, this is how we're gonna develop these units on this two acres, or one acre. So I think you could accomplish it either way, um, if that makes sense, but, I mean, I, I would envision adding it in A-ten, but saying that it would, or whatever zoning districts you want to add it to, but say it would need to be in one of the growth areas. If, if that's truly, if you feel that that's where it should only, you know, be excluded to, in these areas, um.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, and, and the, and the.
Well, I guess that was my question, is, is if it's only.
Fallsville Road somewhere.
If it's only going in the growth area, then that's where we were saying that these UDDs, the Unified Development, PUD, Planned Development, is only in the growth area, I don't know why you would put it through a conditional use to allow it there, if it's, oh, I think you would want it to be under the Unified Development.
Mm-hmm.
Now, conditional use would have to be, if it went outside of the growth areas, then you'd have to come for the conditional use permit and all that stuff. But if we're gonna limit it to those growth areas, I don't know if the cup processes, I think the UDD, if it gets put in place, would be a better mechanism.
That's, that's.
So you're saying the UDD developments do not have to go before.
No, they do.
Oh, no, they don't have to, it's a zoning district.
It's a zoning district, it all comes before.
Okay.
Yeah.
When you approve it, you'd approve what was gonna go in there.
Yeah.
Right, that would be the plan, they'd be set to this plan.
Right. It's kind of like, um, you would be approving, like, the site plan, the schematics, the schematic elevations, like, all that stuff.
The materials.
Materials, yeah.
But it's by right use, I mean, they want to be able to do it no matter what.
No.
You can't both say, we, we're not gonna allow that UDD here, because this person, uh, all by his.
You send notices out, you send notices, it's in the paper.
Just like, okay, yeah.
But, I mean.
Same format as a conditional use permit, but it's not.
But more, I would say it's the same format as a conditional, or I think maybe, because it's not written yet, so obviously it's gotta be written. But I think Wiggins' probably vision is that the UDD would be like the conditional use permit, but with more requirements in terms of site plan, elevations, like planning that development, not just planning it more in like, you know, as a schematic, like you would be, like, it's right now, in some of our conditional use, we get like schematic site plans, so it's like layouts and land days and different things, where this would be more, like, the next step, so your.
It'd be much more detailed.
Your site plan might not be finalized, ready for stamp and approval, but yet you've got landscaping shown, you've got the buildings, the parking lot, you know what I mean? Like, more information.
I'd be in favor of being allowed without a CUP, because the other things in that type of district, it's not gonna have a CUP, is that correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, allowing it is as long as they bought, bought a plan to be approved.
Right.
Right, okay, I think it's, okay, um, and that's exactly, I think, how the work group, uh, the Housing Committee sort of mimic that idea, so.
I think it's second question, if a laggard class, cluster house requiring strong buffering, uh, I mean, you're gonna be in with, uh, mixed other type of entities in there, I don't know, but, because just to say strong is, is not numerical, so it's somebody's opinion.
Right.
I mean, I.
Well, yeah, I think, you know, again, just kind of just goes, you know, you're gonna want, you know, to kind of put, when we do sort of come up with a UDD is that, we talk about cluster housing, and we write a definition of what it would, what it would mean, or supplemental regulations.
Mm-hmm.
We've had, we would say, you know, buffering the architecture, we want to see it on permanent foundations, so you're gonna add those things.
I definitely, we were permanent foundations.
I mean, you want to see all this, could it be manufactured? I, I think so, I think it could be manufactured, uh, you know, but, uh, we, we'd want to see, what does it look like, you know, what is it, you know, to see exactly what this looks like, so, okay.
And I think question three was, we already answered, we already, that was the, right.
All right, moving along, um, so conservation subdivisions, uh, I know we've talked about this, we had a hearing on this, but it's still, um, a conversation, so again, we, though we don't have any A-twenty, it is by right currently in the A-ten, or, or five, or two, minimum fifty acres. You can get a density bonus up to twenty, twenty acres, um, bonus calculations, so when you look at your overall lot, to determine your, your, your bonus, what you can, you can apply, um, you would also, wetlands, streams, floodplain, slopes would, would count. And again, just to show a, an example of what a conservation subdivision could look like, uh, traditional sort of subdivision, and then a conservation subdivision.
But don't we already have the twenty percent of?
Yeah, we already have that by right, yeah, that, that's, but we're, we're, we're focusing on the bonus, you know.
I'd like to see the minimum fifty changed to a hundred, just for the fact that some of the back roads, you might have two or three fifty acre parcels side by side, and you put, throw too much traffic out on the rural roads.
The fifty acres is minimum R two only, right?
No, it's, you, you can, you only have to have fifty acres to qualify for a conservation subdivision, I'd like to see that go, that you'd have to have a hundred to qualify for a by right conservation subdivision.
That's an all.
Even with the hundred, remember with, with the twenty, you know, the hundred example is, you know, you have the hundred acres, you buy right, you could do ten, ten acre lots. If you put the, put, put the, the twenty percent bonus, you then would go to twelve.
Right. And that's why they're never utilized.
And that's, we have had some recently, so.
Schroeder Road.
Right. Well, Schroeder Road, yeah, they're, they're doing one, that's by right, they, they, they had talked about rezoning it into a higher density, um, but.
Just a quick question on that one?
Mm-hmm.
Has that been approved?
Uh, Schroeder Road one, I think they're, if they haven't submitted, they're getting ready to submit by right, I forget exactly where they.
Do you remember if they left all that farmland, that front, farmland?
Yeah, so there, there, it's, it's sort of, and again, I haven't seen the site plan in a while, but it's, it's, it's.
Pushed back in there, okay, just making sure.
So the twenty percent bonus right now, how much of the land do they have to put conservation?
So, you can get a twenty, twenty, twenty or twenty-five, if you, if you do sixty or seventy percent right now, right, sixty, right, so. So the CWG, just, long story short, is they recommended going up to eighty-five percent bonus, so if you take the hundred acres, you could end to, sort of just be in two, you could do eighteen, but they, what part of their idea is that you would remove any of the, uh, priority conservation areas, it was, there's, you know, we don't have steep slopes, but wetlands and floodplains mainly could be removed. Um, and I, I think that is sort of the, the only difference, I think we've, we've talked about, uh, taking the conservation subdivisions up to, up to eighty-five percent bonus, which the CWG said, yeah, we think that's, that's an okay idea, but you would eliminate any of the land that is conservation, namely, you know, floodplain, anything that's, you know, banks of an intermittent stream, those are conservation areas. So even though that string might not be a floodplain, we do have buffer.
Aren't those the features that would make a conservation subdivision be a conservation subdivision? Like, you can't build in any of those anyways.
That's right.
So if you take it away, then you're lessening, like, let's say you had a hundred acres, you had forty of it in floodplain, so now you're to sixty acres, and sixty acres is what you're basing your numbers on, you're just baiting and switching the math game. The whole point is, those forty acres are never gonna develop anyways, because you can't build in a floodplain, you can't build, well, you can build on wetlands, but you don't want to go through the DEQ process, so just stay away. So, to me, those properties that have those large conservation areas, large floodplains, large wetlands, are the ones that should be going conservation subdivision route, so why would you penalize them by taking that out of their calculation?
I agree with that.
Yeah, so I think that, if, if you're, if you're in agreement with that, you know, fair enough, but is the next, the next question, I know we had, you know, we had talked about this a year ago, or so, uh, if you went over the twenty-five, the by rights, twenty or twenty-five percent. If you went above that, you know, even if you went to go fifty percent, whatever may be up to eighty-five percent, anything above the by right would be a conditional use permit.
I'd like all of them to be a conditional use permit, personally.
Well, I was gonna say on, on that part, that, um, that that would have to be conditions put in there, that you would be actually saving the agricultural production land. But you, I know it's easier just go and build a house in the open space, leave woods over there, but it's gotta be the other way around. You've gotta leave the agricultural productive land, and you build houses along the edge of woods.
Right, and neither woods are, like, a creek, all kinds are creek. Agricultural land be first priority to preserve.
And so I, yeah, I had asked, um. Then I went and wondered. Thinking about this map here, and what it has for priority conservation area, now, I live out here, and you could see, I don't know whether this was a politically drawn concept of priority conservation area, because I live out here, and you can see that's a heavy creek right there, it's muddy creek. And it's got, on my property, it's got three large streams of water going down to it, ravines and so forth, and you should none of that, I guess, conservation. So, I mean, I just don't, I asked them, but I just short notice to come up, how, how this, the terminology was made by where priority conservation area is, where isn't. But I just know this out here, where I live, and what the creeks are, and, and if only you go west, the more rolling and hilly and upland is.
Just like the, um, the one on Schroeder Road, and I brought this up, and I'm beating a dead horse, but the one on Schroeder Road, they, is, is.
The, the first one.
The first one.
Because there's.
On Schroeder Road, not the one that's being, the first one, and I like the fact that all their lots are at least two acres, that was the good thing. But instead of putting the houses over in the woods against an already rezoned to two acre minimum subdivision, and leaving the farmland, they built all the houses in the farmland and left the woods as their open space. A conditional use permit probably could have prohibited that, because you would have been able to say, look, we don't like this, we want to leave the agricultural land, you know, for, for, you know, somebody to farm, and that's one reason that I've just been totally against, turned against the conservation subdivision, because, because that one was absolutely done wrong, in my opinion.
Well, I'll show it to you.
But then, Appomattox Trace was done correctly, but not, but not a conservation subdivision.
Not a, that's correct.
But if you use that as the model, because it would like, I'll put in parentheses, I mean, it says on their sign, a conservation subdivision, but it's not.
Their houses back up to, air, some of their property.
This was withdrawn on Schroeder Road, and it's been changed, but, so this is, I guess this is kind of working farm in the front.
Yep.
And what they were doing was gonna come off, and this is all wooded, you can see, they were coming off of, uh, leaving all this open, and because everything around the edge would be, you know, part of the open space, and these are two acre lots, and one of the things that I requested that they do, and of course, this never, you know, we, we didn't amend the ordinance, uh, they just withdrew, but I'd asked that they, you know, do this kind of loop, with the open space in the middle, uh, so that's what they, um, had withdrawn originally, Sean. And I, if I can find the one.
You don't have the other one.
I, I do, I think.
Okay. The other one, I didn't hear.
Mr. Hatch, are you saying that map, that you, the last map you held up is incorrect?
I'd say it is.
He's just saying that there's creeks that don't have high priority conservation around them.
So we're confident the rest of the map is correct?
Yeah. I'm guessing.
That's where I was going with that.
Yeah, what's it down there, where I have fun?
And you can look at the, that existing land use map, and as far as that legend goes, after, uh, and the parcels, it doesn't agree.
There's something in here.
With the reality of the.
I don't know where this, you know, the, I can't see the roads, but.
Well, it's not roads, it's creeks.
Okay, that's gotta be buttered.
Okay, we do have construction plans, so that, that's well, Moss Creek is well in its way, um, let me show you. All right, so this is that same site, um.
Now, just an updated one?
This is what they're doing by right. So they're staying in the front, I don't, I don't know why it doesn't, doesn't, but I, 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 honestly, I sort of liked the other one more, I mean, that's just me personally. They're staying up front, and they're doing their thirteen lots.
Is this the one that's, they just changed on Schroeder Road, that you're getting ready to look?
Yes, this is what it looks like now.
They're not doing it, they're, took the farm in the front.
So they are building on the farm in the front?
In the front, right, so, I mean, just from my perspective, I sort of like putting the development in the rear, where you couldn't see it, you had heavily woods.
That's what I'm saying.
You're keeping the front, but the only reason, the only way that was feasible was by having more lots, and that, that's what made that.
Because I was with the density bonus being a. Cause I was with the density bonus being a lot, the eighty-five.
They were working on the potential that they could have eighteen lots, I think, I think that, no, twenty-three lots. It was a little more than we were gonna allow, but they could have made it work with eighteen, I believe. So.
Well, that was.
When it went to by right, they just moved it all in, all the farmland, and just, and I left the woods, you know, the woods are gonna be, like, like I said, just be personal. Now, if I could choose to, I sort of liked the, the one with more lots that, you know, had the houses and the, you know, in the, you know, sort of in, in the woods, more or less. And then you had this, the, the upper part was just.
Has it been approved?
I mean, that, that is, that, that's, I think that's been recorded or is.
But it's by right, so there's no.
That's what I'm saying.
But I mean, that's.
Should all be by CUP.
Right, so that's, yeah, and I don't disagree with you, all be by CUP, I don't think that's, that's bad idea at all, but I, I think that that's a good example of.
Change some of the ordinance language.
Right, that was sort of my idea of going to the eighty-five percent, giving a, a little more attractive bonus. But because it was a CUP, cause I, I told the applicant, look, you know, they were just showing a cul-de-sac in or out, I said, put a little loop back there.
I like that little loop.
Yeah, I mean, put a little green space there, make the loop, and, you know, so anyway, it's a little thing, but I, I thought it was.
Yeah, their twenty-three lots was coming, they were gonna rezone to R five.
And then plot.
So instead of a hundred acres, I'm gonna say, I'm just gonna use math, and I don't know, but a hundred acres, ten acres, that's ten. If you go to R five, then you get twenty.
Right.
So it was just to get, but then they, it was in the process of us looking at the conservation subdivision, the potential for eighty-five. So then if they went back and didn't do the rezoning, but going through the CUP, that's where they would end up at eighteen, which still, they were fine with eighteen.
They could have made it work, so that, that's a good, I mean, just bring it up, it's a good, good idea, but that's just sort of, um, why I like the CUP is that, you know, if you're gonna go up to the eighty-five, then let's just, let's, anything over twenty-five, let's put it as a CUP, and let's really, you know.
Have bigger lots in the second row?
I don't remember, but I believe they're in that two or three acre lot, so.
Okay, but I guess to your point, what you're saying is kind of take away a by right option, because that by right, or either take away a by right option to have it all go CUP, or put more language in the ordinance to where staff can kick back on a site plan and say, no, you're not following.
Right.
This bullet point note of a requirement, which would be saving the agricultural land. But I think some of it is, is if the agricultural land is along the road.
Right.
Then you have a longer subdivision road going in.
Right.
So that's where those more lots or the higher density bonus, there helps facilitate that, because you're adding road expense to get.
To the rear.
To the rear.
Right. I sort of, I sort of like CUP for all of them go up to eighty-five percent. I think that's what the CWG did, that was one of the recommendations, was just make them all go eighty-five percent, and make them all conditional use.
So I'm fine with going eighty-five percent, I'm fine with making them all conditional use. Where I differ from the CWG is I think you should leave the wetlands, the, don't take anything out, like, if you have a hundred acres, it's a hundred acres. If you have, you know, certain amount of wetlands or floodplain, it doesn't matter, they're, obviously, in the CUP, that would have to be preserved. You don't wanna do this and say, no, I'm gonna put all my houses in another floodplain.
So if we've got agricultural land that they've got to save in the front, and then they've got a lot of land in floodplain, they may be limited.
Well, it might go back to, if, can you pull your screen, your slideshow examples? You have one example that has like a road in, and then some on the right, and some on the left, and then there's a whole bunch of stuff saved, and then you go to the back.
Yeah, I'll show you.
It would be like that, it would be, it might be a little bit more spread out, but you'd have a little bit over here, a little bit over there, cause you'd be navigating around all those.
That's right.
Features. But that's what makes every lot different.
Every piece of land is different.
That, the one on the left, see how there's some in the front, and then I'm assuming that dark green is also, like, what we would do, dark green is conservation, and then you have the ones in the back, like.
That second one up there is not preserving any land at all.
Well, that was his regular residential versus conservation. So. But I'm just saying, like, they don't all have to be to where you conserve the land and your houses are all together. It can be little fingers, depending on the shape of the lot.
So up, up here, everybody, and if we nod our head, it seems like a CUP for all conservation.
Absolutely.
Go by your paths, yeah.
Kelly would say if you're, if you're taking it out of the ordinance, and you're, you're kind of taking this away as a by right option, as we're taking it out, I mean, that's just the recommendation. That could be a little bit of a problem, but on the other hand, we're allowing potentially much larger.
So you can check with Kelly, I wish she was here today.
Yeah, and that was my fault, I scared her, I didn't look at.
Yeah, I know, she had conflict. I think by state code, we have to have conservation subdivision if we are over a certain growth, but I think we just fell below that number. So I don't think we have to have conservation subdivision anymore.
We don't.
So, yeah, I, I mean, I, I think it's a fair trade-off to, if you're gonna say, look, we'll potentially let this be larger, but we really wanna look at everyone. I mean, I, I think that's.
You get more lots if we look at everyone.
Right, you get more lots if we look at everyone, okay, fair enough. Okay, so I think everyone sort of seems to be, okay. All right, we don't have a lot of time left, and that's fine, we've done well today, and we're getting to the hard part now.
So.
We do, and I could probably do a little better job at these, and maybe we can just do a kind of a quick run-through, sort of, you know, believe me, but I just wanna, you know, we'll just do a quick run-through, realize, realize that this is the, you know, I think what we've done so far is, I wouldn't call it east park, but maybe to a certain degree, the actual maps, and looking at those future land use category, this is really where the rubber meets the road for, you know, as far as, you know, what will happen? What can potentially happen on, on, on these lands, so we know that there are five future categories, we have economic priority, economic opportunity. Economic priority, short, you know, what the CWG has said is that this is gonna be commercial, light, light industrial, manufacturing. These are gonna be, you know, employment centers, we're not gonna have any residential. Economic opportunity, a little more flexible, mixed use, so you, you know, you're looking at commercial office. Same thing in economic priority, I think the big difference in economic opportunity is that you are allowing for some residential. So it's really more of a mixed use, even though I don't think it really ever comes out, really says the word mixed use, uh, that's, that's the way it's, it's written. I think we talked about this at the last meeting, maybe, maybe changing the economic opportunity, future land use, and if you look at the past land use maps, there's been changes in verbiage and terminology, so we're just kind of following suit if we were to do this. You know, as far as economic opportunity, I thought maybe, maybe we go to a planned mixed use, maybe we call it something, just so it wouldn't, cause I, I got a little confused, economic opportunity, not priority, I, my mind, but to me, when I see, when I see economic opportunity, my mind goes to mixed use. Now, doesn't mean, when I say flexible, I mean, a mixed use could be, maybe an area is more appropriate just for residential lots, when we, when we put it, you know, economic, say if we called it planned mixed use. Maybe there's some places that are just more appropriate for, for a single-family residential. Maybe some is just appropriate for small-scale commercial. So maybe large, lot intense mixed use nodes, you know, maybe there's master plan, where we're looking at a UDD, a PUD, you know, I call it a PUD, but a UDD, PUD rezoning. And then, of course, the other three, ran out to five, we got the gateway business, we know that's gonna be your commercial, things along the highway, along sixty, your, you know, I guess things like your retail offices, those type of things, restaurants. Industrial, if we understand what industrial is, the Luxon Conlight Construction, for example, Village is gonna be right here in, in the Village Courtyard. So those are your five land use categories. What is your thought about, just off the top of your head, if we did call the economic opportunity a planned mixed use, would that be something that?
So I would say definitely to probably change the name, because it is a touch confusing. Now, I know we've had economic opportunity before, so they're just using names we say. I think I alluded to this a little bit earlier, to me, economic opportunity slash whatever it gets recalled, and gateway business have so much overlap that I don't know if you need both of them, because gateway business, I know, is designed for commercial. Economic opportunity, planned mixed use also has all of the commercial, but everything that's gateway business at one point was RC zoning, when we had that. So to me, make, have the economic priority be your industrial, your larger, you know, man, whatever, manufact, whatever that is. Obviously, you have the village as the village, I mean, that's kind of, we're not moving the courthouse anywhere. So that is there, and then you have in between that, like, to me, I just, there's a lot of overlap between gateway business and economic opportunity in terms of, they pretty much do the same thing, one just gives a little bit more flexibility, one's more rigid, why would we wanna be more rigid? If we have these certain areas, and if we look at the growth areas, maybe there are pieces where it's like, when it comes in for that univide development, like, no, we need more commercial here, so you can't do all residential here, or all industrial here, you need to mix, and we need more uses than just one on this site. You know what I'm saying?
I don't like the idea of getting, getting rid of something that states strictly commercial, which is what gateway, gateway business does. It's strictly commercial, and I don't like the idea of going away with that one at all.
But, but it's, economic opportunity has all that as well.
But it's not strict, is it strictly commercial, no residential at all?
No, it allows for mixed use.
That's right.
I think, I see economic opportunity as important, and I think that the CWG saw economic opportunity as more of a mixed use.
Then to me, we need more economic opportunity.
I think that's what.
In our plan than gateway business, which right now, they only put two places for economic opportunity. So I think if you wanna leave ga, I think that you could go two ways, you could either take gateway business away and make one that deals with, I'm gonna say, the middle ground of you're not all industrial, and you're not all residential, and you're not, you know, village, which is completely separate. Or you start adding in, because we see the problem that we have now with gateway business being everywhere, we don't have that many businesses coming to Palatine. So if you leave all this stuff as purple on the map, it's gonna stay purple.
And, and part of the maps that we're gonna show, and, you know, we can maybe look, I, I don't know if you wanna dig into the maps next time, but I think we made good progress today, but, you know, part of what I at least have worked on those so far, and like you have it in your packet now, these maps take a lot of work and energy, just kind of, kind of really looking at every parcel, sort of thinking to myself, what, you know, again, thinking five, ten, forty years, would it be logical to think this, this parcel could be housing, or resi, you know, whatever, changed from its current use? And so that's what I've been trying to do, is go through and, and think, but I think one of the things I came up with, and this even came out in the last meeting, is I think there were some areas that we at least saw, know, Bobby had pointed out a couple of spots that seemed like, well, why wouldn't this be more, maybe better for housing, for instance?
And if you did that, take, if you added one, and you would, I would take away another one, because, I mean, they worked really hard on this, and my fear is that we're gonna do too much that's gonna allow that high-density housing.
Yeah, but I still think if you did put, say if we, we call economic opportunity.
Whatever.
Whatever we, we can, just, just so it wouldn't be confusing. It doesn't to me necessarily mean that snap your fingers, this is all gonna be housing and development, that anything that comes forward is just, just a, you know, a, you're gonna sign a check, you know, that, that's not really the thought, is that you're still gonna be scrutinized.
The other piece to it's that UDD, and I guess it's probably looking at it as, if we take it to economic opportunity, whatever its name is, it allows the most flexibility for industrial, commercial, mixed use, and all of that. You still have that UDD process that you're coming through, so it's still reviewed, it's still looked at, nothing's rubber stamped. It's just the options, like.
And we're not gonna get down to the fine comb and say, this, you know, we know exactly what the future is for every parcel here. I don't necessarily think we're trying to, we're trying to kind of put a broad brush on it, saying, by using, like, the tools, the UDD, look, bring something to us, we'll look at it, we'll think about it, staff will look at it, we'll, we'll vet it, and, you know, again, all of this is dependent on, when you're looking at future land use maps, I mean, owner doesn't have any intention of develop, or, I mean, it, I mean, you know, we're, we're literally, even along the sixty corridor, we're literally talking to hundreds of landowners. You know, and everyone might have a different.
One acre and a forty acres.
Right, well, it's a couple hundred acres, so.
Yeah, there might be larger ones.
Right, right, I mean, so it's, I guess telling Mr. Hatcher, a hundred years ago, when their, you know, sixty corridor had, I don't know, forty landowners. It was a little different, you know, now you have so many different, it, it's, it's kind of hard to put those contiguous sort of groups of parcels together. But we can still try to come up with a land use map, just sort of think about it. So I don't know if we just wanna maybe stop here, and I can continue to work, although I know you have seen it, we looked at it last time. What I could do is write a summary of what we talked about today, and, of course, you know, we'll do minutes and all that, but this is still the things that we need to think about, make it, I think we made a few firm decisions today, but there's still a few things out there that we can still, within. But if we come back in January.
Go to schedule that meeting now.
Yeah, I think we should, and then we can really go through in January, you know, we can go from Mayton's Road to County, and I've done a lot, but I think I could do it a little better, a little more detail between now and, um, January, and we can really go through, I think, like I said, I think I've done a lot already, we can really go through parcel to parcel, see what the CWG's recommended. See what, what maybe your ideas are for these same parcels, and there are some parcels outside that they didn't consider that maybe we also wanna consider. So.
Still a Monday, I mean, Tuesday or Wednesday in the middle of January, cause my horse might be racing one of the other days, and I have no idea knowing until that time comes. But it could be on Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, and I always like to go to my.
I think it's one point of clarification, so the areas we're talking about, right now, they're presently A-ten, is that correct?
So the areas that the future land use map, that the, at least the work group did, some are A-ten, I mean, some are, you know, some of the future land use map simply shows what's already on the ground. So we're calling it gateway business, what's already zone commercial.
Okay, I got that.
There's some areas that are A-ten, I think, you know, that, and again, in the growth areas, that are A-ten, that they're showing as future. I think the, the biggest land use that they really went through is that economic priority.
So I'm just talking about what's gonna stop the continued degradation of these parcels, just, they just don't go to house. You know, cause that's a problem we face already, the division, these parcels and houses on a lot of them, so.
For these?
Yeah.
They're only within the growth areas.
But some of those parcels are just A-ten, aren't they?
In the growth areas, a lot of the future land use parcels, I would say the majority are probably A-ten.
Especially the ones up, the two hundred and some acres up there at the Corrache.
So I'm, I'm just talking about, you know, meantime, what's stopping, you know, continued degradation of what you want to accomplish, and to just residential houses.
I mean, if, if, unless they're gonna do it prior road, I mean, most of those A-ten are just gonna stay A-ten, and, you know, or rezoned.
Yeah, I mean, but some of them, just front lawn, they're gonna stay, right. Build one house on one acre parcel.
Right, and, I mean, that might just be what the landowner wants to.
That's what I'm saying.
And if that's the case, I mean, we can make all the plans, and say, this, this is future industrial, but that's private property is always the.
Yes, I, I believe that as the reality of.
Oh, no, yeah, exactly, and I think that's why you wanna look at multiple areas.
Yeah.
Because ultimately, you know, we can make all the plans, but if the underlying private property rules the.
And the parcel is the more probability we got accomplishing.
Right.
Cause we talked about earlier about a person coming in buying up, uh, this parcel, someone got a nice house on it, the probability that's taking place. Maybe, it might happen twenty-five, thirty years.
Right. The fourteenth, January, with three to five work?
Works for me.
Works for me.
Okay, we'll make this the, we will make a push to really go, and I've, I've got most of it there. Could have done a lot today, but I think we can make a push to really go from the County Line to Mayton, to look at all the different possibilities for land use. That will give me plenty of time to procrastinate.
I don't think you ever procrastinate. I don't think you have time to procrastinate.
Not really.
Look, you know, you put a good layout today, the way you presented it, you know, options and-
So thank you. And our white's up and up, so we'll, we'll at least know what we did, where we stand, so we'll put this on my calendar, and I appreciate it.
Any other comments from the, okay?
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yep.
Meeting adjourned.